Yeah, let's go and then we have to adjourn the room. So the State Board will reconvene and we will be adjourning, not adjourning, but having a closed session. So we will consider during the closed session, the demand letter received from Morrison, Forrester, and public advocates regarding early literacy in Stockton Unified School District and Los Angeles Unified School District. So we need to clear the room of the audience because we're going into closed session. Item 18, Michelle Center will present for the Department, English Language Proficiency Assessments for California.
President Kirst, boss man, Karik Ashley, members of the Board, Michelle Center, Director of the Assessment Division, I'm here today to talk about item 18. This is an action item before you. I will be having a PowerPoint to go through the actions that are in front of you. We're going to ask the Board for three different actions. The first are revisions to the summative assessment test blueprints for the LPAC. The next is the reporting hierarchy of the LPAC summative assessment and initial assessment. And lastly, revisions to the general performance level descriptors. So those are the three things before you today. First, we rec-- I don't feel like those are-- I don't feel like I have sound, do I? Okay. First, we request approval for revisions to the summative assessment test blueprint. So as a reminder, a blueprint details the number of items and the points for each task type and content standard. This is for the operational test that begins in fall 2018. The SBE approved the original blueprints in November of 2015, and the CDE is now recommending revisions based on stakeholder input and the field test of the summative assessment that has occurred. The proposed revisions fit into a few different categories. The first are revisions to address administration concerns, which resulted in the elimination of task types that did not really reflect authentic scenarios. The next are revisions to ensure appropriate rigor were also made to the blueprint. This change ensured that the appropriate number of items were included for various task types to address the full continuum of performance. Lastly, revisions were made to address the performance of various task types. This resulted in the realignment of some task types and the elimination of others. Specific examples of these revisions are included in the item, as well as a mocked-up version of the blueprint that clearly identifies where we are recommending changes. The next action before the Board addresses the reporting hierarchy. Before I share the reporting hierarchy recommendations with you, I want to share our approach for its development. As we thought about how to report the results, we considered how the new ELD standards integrate listening, speaking, reading, and writing skills. We also wanted to ensure the technical quality of the test and the reliability and validity of the information given to parents, teachers, schools, and districts. To address questions of reporting, the CDE did ask its contractor, ETS, who is here with me to answer tough questions, to conduct what is called a dimensionality study on the field test results. The study was designed to investigate which domains could be combined into a scale score that would provide useful and technically sound information. Based on the results of that study, we are proposing reporting hierarchies for the summative assessment and initial assessment, and those are shown in Slides 6 and 7. At the top level for the summative assessment, reporting hierarchy, you will see an overall scale score. That is a composite scale score of the oral and written language subscales, and will be mapped onto both or all four of the performance levels. So you'll notice in that top box, you see overall scale score, scale score, a number, as well as under that for performance levels, levels 1, 2, 3, 4. The overall score is based on all test items across the four domains in the LPAC. Next, the oral and written subscales are under that. You'll see that as oral language scale score, written language scale score. Each of these are mapped onto the four levels. You'll see that under there, 1, 2, 3, 4. You also see the word score. Again, that's a number. The last row of the hierarchy will be the domain levels of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. They'll be mapped to three performance levels, but no scores provided. As you can imagine, those being at the bottom level have fewer test items associated with them, therefore less precision, and so we are recommending three levels and no score. This proposed reporting hierarchy is an enhancement over the salt because it provides three scores. Imagine this overall score, this oral score, and the written score that can be used to look at progress longitudinally. Next, on Slide 7, is the reporting hierarchy for the initial assessment that begins July 2018. As a reminder, the summative assessment measures student progress annually and is used for accountability, whereas the initial assessment is a screener to identify students who are either initially fluent English proficient or English learners. As with the first hierarchy, the overall score is a composite of the two measures below it, again, oral language and written language. The overall score will produce a scale score and be mapped onto three performance levels. Again, this is a shorter assessment than the summative. All test items on the initial are included in the overall score. At the second level, we are anticipating three oral language and written level, written language performance levels. At the third level, is the number of items in each domain is relatively small, there will be no scores or levels produced for the individual domains. Finally, the last portion of this action before you today is proposing revisions to the general performance level descriptors. I have examples of those, I have those changes in Slides 8 and Slides 9. So in January 2016, you approved the LPAC general performance level descriptors. Based on discussions with California stakeholders, as well as to reflect the field test dimensionality study and the reporting hierarchy that I just described to you, the CDE is proposing revisions to all the levels as shown in the red italics on the slides before you. In general, what we're doing is replacing the word functional with developed based on stakeholder input. We replaced receptive and productive with oral and written based on the results of the dimensionality study. We also added a reference based on the request of stakeholders to the 2012 ELD performance levels, bridging, expanding, and emerging, that correspond to each performance level The CDE will provide an October information memorandum to you that details the summative assessment standard setting plan, as well as the threshold validation study that ETS plans to conduct. Additionally, in October of this year, we will be conducting a standard setting of the summative assessment with educators throughout California. In November, we plan to bring the preliminary proposed threshold scores for the summative assessment to you for approval. And in early 2018, we plan to present revised initial assessment test blueprints, if necessary, to you for approval. And make sure that's all-- yep, that is all the slides, so I'm available to answer questions.
Okay, questions? Board Member Rucker?
Michelle, first of all, thank you for doing this work. It's really important and technical stuff, and people's eyes tend to glaze over because that's not all, you know, that's not the stuff that makes the headlines. But I do have a que-- so I appreciate the technical work that it, that's required to do this. I do have a question on the revision on the general prescription level description, PLDs. There we go.
Okay.
If you could take a look at Level 4, and I'm looking at the last sentence, it says that this test performance level corresponds to the upper range of the bridging proficiency level. Okay, I was okay with that. Then when you go to Level 3, I get confused because there seems to be some overlap between Level 3 and Level 4. It says in that last sentence, this test performance level corresponds to the lower range of the bridging proficiency level through the upper range of the expanding proficiency level? Okay, I don't understand that.
So I, as I was thinking about this PowerPoint, there is a particular page within the standards that I probably should have included in here. It's Page 20 of the ELD standards, which gives information about when this transition occurs for students and when they are needing less support to develop their, their language skills. And, you know, I took special note of that because ELD is not my area, looking to Veronica, and it's hers, because it is in that range difference. It is not set at a particular level, and so I believe that is accurate, looking to Veronica.
Yeah, I'm, I'm quite, I did go and read that section.
Page 20.
I did go back and read Page 20. The reason why I'm bringing up this is because I think there's, and I think there's another sentence that's needed in Level 3 to describe that point, because I'm not sure that that the, it, I know that you're trying to keep the PLDs uniform and parallel in how they explain what the difference in the definition of the performance is, but I actually think there's another sentence needed in the descriptor for Level 3 to explain that particular point about where the, how teachers would, based on students who are identified at this level, how you make decisions about intervention or instructional support, because the way this is written, it's, it doesn't give that clarity or that clarification.
So maybe I should also clarify what we will be using these for, and I think that might be helpful. So these general performance level descriptors are not reporting descriptors. So these will be used when we go forth and do additional work that goes on beyond this. So when we develop reporting descriptors, which are parent-friendly descriptions of what the levels mean, they will be based on this information, but we will not be including what is almost a paragraph, as you see here. We also use this information with the standard setting panel. So this should represent the policy information that this Board agrees is appropriate for the levels, so we provide that information to the standard setting panel. Additional places where it may be used is if we do different manuals or guidance that we would be providing to educators about the meaning, but in essence, this is not what you would see on a report that is meant for parents and their understanding. Does that help or make it worse?
It makes it worse.
Yeah.
Let me tell you why it makes it worse. Having sat in the back of the room and observed a standard setting panel, a great deal of time was spent by the teachers, the parents, and other stakeholders who were in that room as, as participants in that standard setting, parsing out the meaning of those performance level descriptors. So a teacher of students of English learners may understand what the bridging and expanding proficiency level is, but the way this descriptor is written will take a lot of time to explain and talk to parents and other stakeholders who are not educators. And unless you plan to walk them through Page 20 and walk them through what, how Page 20 informs the instructional decisions that teachers make, this description is going to create some confusion in that room when those standard setting activities are going on. So I still say another sentence is needed in Level 3 to help, and to help explain what that seeming overlap actually means.
Okay, seems like we have agreement, so. Do our liaisons on this one comment at all?
No, I think this is, this test has been quite a few years in the making, and it's very exciting to see that we're at this phase and we're about to do the launch. I think it may be helpful to reiterate when this is actually, when we have the pilot, when this will become in effect, and then in the interim, what we might, so that we're kind of clear when this is actually going to come, when this is actually going to become in effect.
So, I mean, I think I did provide the dates for when the test becomes operational and when we come back to you with the standard setting. I'm, I think that what you're asking for, and though this isn't how you worded the question, is information on what districts should be using for decision-making that could be occurring during that year. And so I would ask that, you know, Veronica, who is over our English learner policy division, respond to that question.
Good morning. My name is Veronica Aguilera. I'm the Director of the English Learner Support Division. In terms of currently, we send guidance to the field. As you know, the bill that was going through the legislature did not get passed, so it became a two-year bill. So the law has not changed, education code has not changed in terms of reclassification and what we can use for placement. So the short answer is we're still, we have to wait till the standard setting occurs. We have to wait till the legislation passes. We are working with the Comprehensive Center, and we are engaged in that work in terms of, once the standard setting occurs, we'll be looking at reclassification criteria.
Thank you.
So how does this affect our ability to, in our dashboard, report what we need to report on English language proficiency and so on? What's the timing on that? And reclassification, I guess that isn't formally on the dashboard, or, no, yeah. So, okay, it doesn't affect that, but.
No, it shouldn't affect the dashboard at all. We have, there'll be a status for one year, but other than that, everything will remain the same.
Okay.
We'll have a smooth transition, yes.
Okay, any other Board member questions? Board Member Valdez.
Just a comment. Thank you for all the work, and this is an exciting moment, and from, as a practitioner looking and being able to look at the blueprints and get ideas and understand where we're going, I think is going to be very, very helpful, and everyone is excited and anticipating this, it's just the transition, and so the clear communication from this level, I know this is a little more technical, but as you move forward, that would be very, very helpful. So thank you.
Thank you. President Kirst, can I make a correction?
Sure.
So what was in the PowerPoint, I didn't quite get the correction that we already have in your item. So if you look in your item on Attachment 3, you do see a slight reordering of that statement related to Level 3, Member Rucker.
Ah.
So it says, "The test performance level corresponds to the upper range of expanding proficiency through the lower range of bridging." So we reverse the order. So I want to, we did catch that, and I didn't realize we didn't get it in the slide.
That's it, that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we need an action here. We need a motion.
So I will move.
Oh, public comment.
Would the following people please line up for item 8? Doug McRae and Martha Diaz.
Good morning. I'm Doug McRae, retired test guy from Monterey. The three revisions for the LPAC Test Development Plan outlined this morning are unusual for a large-scale K-12 testing program at this stage of development, but fundamentally, they are okay to match the results of the field test that was conducted spring 2017. However, the next steps, what to use the field test data to conduct standard setting is abysmally poor educational measurement practice. Test development, field tests are not designed to provide interpretable individual student results, nor are they designed to provide comparable item to, item data required for standard setting or identification of cut scores. Rather, standard setting should take place on the census operational data collected spring 2018 to allow for reporting fall 2018. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this important standard setting aspect of the project. Thank you.
Martha Zaragoza Diaz, representing the California Association for Boundance Education and Californians Together, and I concur with Member Rucker's comments about, when you first look at, at what's presented, it's very technical, and it's like, ah, you know, what are, what are we trying to do here? But we have had several conversations with CDE staff, especially on the performance level descriptors, because we did have some concerns. We appreciate the number of opportunities given to us to really have a very comprehensive conversation around, around the PLDs. We are pleased to see the revisions, and we support the revisions that are proposed in this item, but in particular to the PLDs. We think that the revisions really establish a clear link regarding the PLDs to the ELD standards that will help teachers better understand the LPAC and, and to enable them to better use the LPAC. So we support this item, and we would request a yes vote by the members. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the public comment, so I think we're ready for a motion.
So I will move CDE's recommendation that, to approve the proposed revisions to the standards, sorry, the summative assessment test blueprints for the LPAC and the revised general PLDs and the reporting hierarchy of the LPAC essays and IA score reports.
Your second? Second, Holiday? All right, all those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, that's unanimous. All right, now we're going to turn to charters, but before we do, I'd like to recognize the contributions of Cindy Chan as the Director of the Charter Schools Division since 2015. She has worked in that division at CDE for more than 14 years and is now going to retire, and I don't know anybody on the Board that doesn't miss her or won't miss her. In particular, in addition to your fine technical analysis and clear explanations, you have such a calming influence. You never get rattled. You know, the things get a little tense, and you're always calm and always, yeah. So we also will miss the affect, which will be hard to duplicate. So thank you so much for your service, and we look forward to happy retirement. So, yeah, with, item 19 is a public hearing, so Cindy will present, and then I'll open the public hearing.
So Mike, I think Bruce wants to make a few remarks.
Oh, Bruce wants to make a few.
I, I just wanted to add Dr. Kirst's comment. I speak for Member Williams and myself, and thanking you, Cindy, for all the help and all the guidance that you've given us over the years. It has been a pleasure working with you, because not only are you calm, but you're very smart, and the combination is, is wonderful. Thank you. And I know if Member Williams could be here, she would agree wholeheartedly. Thanks for all you've done.
And Deputy Superintendent Karik Ashley would like to comment on behalf of Tom Torleksen.
Yes, Superintendent is dismayed that you can't be here for your last Board meeting, but he wanted to make sure that I expressed his appreciation, the Department's appreciation for the work, not only smart and competent and calm, but we'll miss you just because you're a good person, and it's always a pleasure to work with you, so thank you.
Thank you. So just, real briefly, I'll just say, I don't know if a lot of you know my background, but it's, it's mainly of my 30 years in the state. It is predominantly fiscal, so in auditing, accounting, budgets, apportionments, you know, funding formulas. But the reason why I was interested in this position, believe it or not, one of the things on my bucket list was, I wanted to prepare, at least present one or two items to the State Board.
Well, you got your wish.
I got my wish. So, I mean, with that, you know, I thank the, the CDE executive team, especially Nick Schweitzer, who's my deputy, he's been very supportive, as well as, you know, the other leadership within the Department, and the Superintendent, the chief deputies, the deputies, as well as other divisions, my division staff, which is just wonderful. And then just all of you, Karen's staff, Walter's office, I think I work with Karen's staff more than anyone because of all the items, and we have a really great working relationship with the staff, so it really makes everything so much easier. And I just want to, just say thank you for, there's three board liaisons that I work with closely on the charter items, Board Member Rucker on the, on the charter waivers, and then Board Member Holiday, and Board Member Williams, if she's watching out there. And the support that the three of you provide when I'm up here, I mean, these, these items are so difficult, but it's, it's something really small, as much as, you know, the, the eye contact we make, a nod or a smile, it really helps to, I mean, I think move things along, and I feel that support, and I feel like they bail me out sometimes when I'm, I'm just not certain I'm getting a point across, and they understand what I'm trying to say, and then they articulate that because they know you all so well. So I want to thank you especially, and it's been an honor and a privilege to be able to stand up here and present the items on behalf of the Department and the charter school community, and I'm really gonna, I'm gonna miss the work, so thank you all so much.
Thank you. Board Member Rucker?
Cindy, I just have to tell you, not just because you're smart and not just because you're patient, you're actually a very good tutor. I have learned so much from you, not only about the regulatory process and the Board's responsibilities and obligations for monitoring and overseeing charters, but the great demand on not only your expertise, but on the work that you do as a representative for the Board and for the Department in having these conversations with a lot of stakeholders in the charter community. It's been probably the greatest collaboration that I've been able to witness, that we have grown both in dimension and aspect, in the relationship with the charter community, and a lot of that has been because you have been a very good leader in this conversation and in this policy area. So I really personally will miss you a great deal.
All right, I guess you may begin with.
Okay. So just, I'm gonna take just a brief moment, and I think it's on behalf of our new member, and just for all of you, as my last kind of meeting, just to present a little bit, just a little bit of background information on the types of charter school petition items that come before you, and then it sort of serves as a segue into the three items that I'll present, that'll be, oh, we'll be presenting this morning. So there's four types of charter items that the State Board can take action on, and I'm gonna kind of categorize them. There are new charter establishments, and in these cases, there's three types. There's appeals that are denied by a local entity, a school district, county board of education, where it's denied, and so the charter petitioner appeals to the State Board. Currently, we have 15 State Board of Education authorized charter schools that were appealed by a local entity. Another type of charter establishment is a statewide benefit charter. We haven't had any that I've been able to present to you other than a renewal. We currently have one statewide benefit charter, high-tech, that operates six individual charter schools. And then a district-wide charter, which may be coming at some point in the near future, in which a, an existing school district converts all of its charter schools, oh, all of its schools to a charter school, and so they submit a district-wide petition for joint approval by the State Superintendent of Public Instruction and the State Board. The next type of, type of item or charter petition item would be a revocation, and we've brought two types to you before. One would be an appeal of a revocation action by a local entity, and also an action that the State Board may take on one of its own charters to revoke. Third type of a charter petition would be an appeal of a renewal, and that is a denial by a local entity of an existing charter, and so the charter school can appeal its renewal to the State Board. And currently, we have six active charter schools that were authorized originally by a local district, not approved or renewed, came to the State Board and were approved, approved here at the state level. And then lastly, the last type of, of a request is a material revision, and this is the only type of request that is not done at the local level and come to the state. So you, you will never hear a material revision request by a locally authorized charter. These are only for your existing State Board charter schools. And with that, I'll just talk a little bit about what we do with material revisions, because all three today are, are material revision requests. So the standard of review for material revision is virtually the same for the establishment of a new charter school, absent local district finding. of a new charter school, absent local district findings and signature requirements. But it does include a thorough review of the charter petition and the multi-year financial plan, which we do on your behalf. Our review is to determine whether the educational program is sound, the charter school is likely to implement that program, and whether the petition provides a reasonably comprehensive description of the charter elements, the required charter elements. The action before the State Board is to either approve the material revision or deny the material revision. If approved, the charter school may actually implement that revised petition. If the action is to deny the request, which must be based on factual findings, the school continues to operate, so it doesn't cease to exist, but it has to operate under its current charter without the material revisions. So now I'll present the first of the items for you, which is the Prepatec Los Angeles High. So item 19 is a request for material revision from a current State Board of Education authorized charter school. Prepatec Los Angeles High was originally denied by the Los Angeles Unified School District and the Los Angeles County Board of Education. The charter school appealed to the state and was approved by the State Board in January 2016 for a five-year term to serve up to 168 pupils in grade nine, adding an additional grade level each year, expanding to 672 pupils in grade nine through grade 12 by 2019-20. Prepatec is currently in its second year of operation. The charter school is operated by Alta Public Schools, which is a private nonprofit public benefit corporation. Currently, Alta Public Schools operates two charter schools authorized by LAUSD, Academia Moderna, which serves kindergarten through grade five, and a middle school, Prepatec Los Angeles, which serves grade six through grade eight. And then lastly, the State Board school serves the full spectrum, the remaining spectrum, which is the high school grades nine through 12. Prepatec predominantly serves the low-income Latino-Hispanic communities of southeast Los Angeles. In their original petition, they budgeted to begin its first year of operation, which was last fiscal year, with 168 pupils. However, in their actual enrollment, ended up being 112 pupils at the 2016-17 second period report of attendance, which represents a decline of 33% from what the State Board had approved in its original petition. Furthermore, the charter school's 2016-17 second interim report projected a negative ending fund balance of approximately 189,000 with 0% reserves. So as a result of the decline in their actual and projected enrollment and the year-end negative financial position, the charter school was required to submit a material revision and also present a balanced multi-year financial plan that aligns with the lower, more realistic pupil enrollment. In addition, we asked the charter school that they also address the proposed actions that the Prepatec Board will take to ensure pupil enrollment growth. On May 31st, we received Prepatec's request for a material revision to its charter, which I'm just gonna focus on those changes for you. Those are changes to enrollment, which reflect a reduction in all of the remaining years of the charter school's term, change to facilities, and a presentation of a new multi-year financial plan. For the facilities, in the prior year, Prepatec operated in a leased church facility in Huntington Park. Beginning in the current year, the charter school proposes to operate at two different sites within the LAUSD boundaries. The grade nine pupils will be located in the LAUSD Proposition 39 facility on the campus of Huntington Park High School in Huntington Park. Grade 10 pupils will be located at a leased facility in the city of Bell. And grade 11 and 12 pupils were not included in their, in their plan, and so the charter school could share. We tried to reach out to them, but we wanted to confirm when they build out the remaining high school levels, what their plans are within these two facility operations. We performed a thorough review of the revised budget and multi-year financial plan, which is supercritical in this case, because the material revision proposes to reduce enrollment as well as address the prior year negative fund balance and no reserves. So we just note the following as a highlight to the financial plan review. The revised multi-year budget includes reduced revenues and expenditures across all years in comparison to their original budget. It includes a projected enrollment of 260 pupils in the current year, which is an increase of 148 pupils compared to their prior year actual enrollment. So as such, this will increase their local control funding formula revenues. The plan includes expenditure reductions to certificate and classified salaries and benefits, books and supplies, and contracted services agreements. And in response to the change in facilities, the budget does include an increase in total estimated costs for rents and leases. We find that the adjusted multi-year financial plan to be reasonably sufficient as the charter school begins to rebuild its reserves in the current year. But I do want to note that the fiscal sustainability is dependent on the charter school increasing and maintaining its enrollment. The reduction of expenditures won't be sufficient going forward. The recruitment efforts that the charter school has planned will need to continue and be implemented throughout the year and moving forward, and critical to the ongoing viability of the charter school. Unfortunately, there was no plan submitted with the material revision that would explain their outreach and recruitment efforts, so we are recommending a condition that the charter school submit a plan to the CDE. I believe the Prepatec principal is here today to present to the board, and I reached out to him and shared that he should present to you what those efforts are, at least orally, because there was nothing provided in writing. The Prepatec request for material revision was not presented to the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools for their consideration. Since the final petition documents and all the materials that the school wanted to provide, we didn't receive them in time to present for the August ACCS meeting. But since the proposed changes to the charter school were critical because it dealt with the budget and the facilities and the enrollment, we felt that they needed to be approved prior to this current school year starting, and so there was an agreement that the request would be brought directly to the State Board rather than wait for the next October meeting, which would make a November board item, and that we felt that was a little too late for the charter school. We reviewed the entire material revision petition, and we find that it meets the standards and criteria and provides a reasonably comprehensive description of the required elements. There are some recommended technical amendments that we are making. We recommend that the State Board hold a public hearing, and they are after-approved with technical amendments, and the one condition, which is that they submit the plan, recruitment and outreach plan, to the CDE. That the request for material revision of the Prepatec charter under the oversight of the State Board for the remainder of the charter term, effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2021, is approved. So I believe representatives of the school are here, and I can also answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, I think the way we usually do this is initial technical counsel, questions to Cindy if we have them, then we'll do the public hearing, and then I'm sure the districts will have, and the charter school will be able to comment during the public hearing. So they'll have 10 minutes in the public hearing. We have to have a public hearing for all these sorts of things. Any technical questions or?
Or comments?
If not, then I will convene the public hearing. The public hearing is open, and you, each side will have 10 minutes, and we'll start with the petitioners. Teca Prepah, please come forward. Is anybody here? No? Okay. Are you from Teca Prepah?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Please come forward. We're ready. You have 10 minutes for the public hearing. Okay. Okay, we'll start the clock as soon as, you have 10 minutes for your petition to be presented, and whatever else you wanted to say to the board.
Good morning. We just flew in from LA, so.
Yeah, very timely, right?
Yes. Oh, good morning. My name is Jose Salas. I'm the founding principal of Prepatec Los Angeles High School. We are opening our second year tomorrow, hopefully, and we, at this time, the only 100% IB school in South LA, so we're very proud of that and excited about starting our second year. We have our staff hired, we have our, our teachers are credentialed. We're excited about our new class. We're adding a 10th grade now. We had 9th grade last year, and now it's 9th and 10th. Our enrollment is getting stronger. Last year, in 9th, when we only had our 9th grade class, we started the year with 105 students, ended the year with 112, retained almost 95% of our students, so we're very satisfied that those numbers show that our kids felt like they got what they deserved or what they needed and stayed with us. Our second class now has grown, and at this time, we have 125 students enrolled and still a few more processing, so we're ready to get our school year started. We did last year teach at a location, a church location, and part of why we're here today is that we requested a change of venue and there for purposes of improved facilities. So last year, we were at a church facility. This year, we're splitting our school into two campuses. We have our 9th grade at a Prop 39 site at an LAUSD high school, Huntington Park High School, and our 10th graders are going to a private site that we have converted into a school. So the move is to improve what we're delivering. So our being at the Prop 39 site, larger classrooms, more technology, science lab, everything compliant with USD standards, which is an improvement from where we were. And then with our 10th grade site, the private site, it has been converted, the classrooms are larger, state-of-the-art technology. So the request for a move is to improve our instruction, improve our student experience. We also requested to, and I don't know if this was already talked about, but it's our change of enrollment goals from 168 per grade level to 130. We did go back and look at what enrollment numbers are for similar charter schools throughout our area, and that's where we are choosing to change, is consistent with what everyone else in our area has. It still balances our budget, it still gives us an opportunity to run our IB program. That has not been compromised, so those numbers make more sense, and listening to the enrollment numbers that I shared with you at the beginning, we will be able to meet our goals. And that's all. Thank you.
Just, as part of the public hearing, you have 10 minutes, so that's all you, because I need to have the other side before we have questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So now we have 10 minutes for the opponents to the petition. Seeing no opponents, I now declare the public hearing closed, and now we can have, we could ask for public comment, I think.
With the following people, please line up for item 19, Eric Premack and Michelle Lynch.
Eric Premack, Charter Schools Development Center. We support the amendments here. We would note, though, and you've heard this from me before, we don't think enrollment is a subject of a charter amendment and that that could be, could and should be handled at the staff level. The change in facilities, splitting to two locations, that is a legitimate item that should be amended in the charter. A number of you, over the years, have expressed concern to me about the amount of time that you spend on charter matters, given that charter schools only serve about 10% of the kids in the state, and you feel like you spend half your time on charters. This is a great, this type of subject is a great opportunity to focus your work. I would also suggest that if it is a routine facilities change, that that could probably go on your consent calendar as well, unless there's some real substantive issue to debate behind it. Thank you.
Michelle Lynch, on behalf of the California Charter Schools Association, I'll just echo Eric's comments, that we don't believe this should be a material revision for the change in enrollment, and that, you know, the facilities change could be done probably on consent if it is a routine change. Also, we do support this material revision today. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like your legal counsel to comment on those. Let me declare the public hearing closed. I already did, so we're now in public comment, so we could have your comment on why we have to do this.
Well, it's certainly something we can look into, but it has to be, it has to be a public hearing. So I'm not sure how we can have a public hearing on the consent agenda, because we have to give both sides the opportunity to talk about. And in our MOU, we say any changes in enrollment that are greater than 25% constitute a material revision. So we can certainly explore that in the future, but we landed on 25%, because then that affects the budget, also affects the facilities, and there's so many other domino effects that result from the change in enrollment. That's why we've determined it, 25% is the material revision.
But that is a memorandum. What is the legal basis of that?
That's the MOU, the contract that we have between our charter schools and the State Board, our operated charter schools.
So that isn't within our discretion?
Sure. We can, we can explore whether that's the right amount, but it's, like I said, it's a determination that, I don't think we can say that enrollment in and of itself is not a material revision because of the effect of enrollment changes on budget, facilities, staffing, all of the other, like I said, it's a domino effect, so it affects a lot of other things. But we will certainly look into the MOU.
Okay, and the requirement for the public hearing is?
Ed code, education code, yeah.
And it says what?
That we have to have a public hearing that charter, material revisions are conducted in accordance with the same method that you conduct charter approvals, and that's a public hearing. So that's why we have 10 minutes for each side, because that's how our public hearings are conducted. We'll look into it. We'll be happy to look into it.
We're getting more and more of these, and at some point, some board will confront, it seems to me, an overload perhaps, particularly when we get into discussions of reauthorizing all these operations that are off-site, you know, and these kinds of things that we're going to be taking up from the Shasta decision, so every, yeah.
Those are new schools, so that would be a different, different discussion.
Yeah, but if we approve some, we're going to have to go through a material revision.
At some point.
Yeah, and I think we need to be cognizant of the workload, not only for our board, but future boards as well, as we, because if we, you know, we might have a big load next year on these.
We'll be happy to explore it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Pardon?
We should, Bruce first.
Okay, yes. We will start then with the questioning with our charter school liaison.
I think the events are eager. I'll defer to the rest of the board, and then I.
No, I think you would, oh, you would prefer to defer?
Yes, and then, and then I will, I do have some comments.
Yeah, I know. So who was first here? I thought Ortiz Lacan was first. Yeah.
Actually, I just wanted to just make a comment on the last thing. The material, there is requirement for a public hearing for a material revision, but what constitutes material revision, we've established in an MOU, so we have discretion on that part, and I think that is the piece that we may want our liaisons to work with our staff in reviewing.
All right, so Ortiz Lacan.
I actually had a question about recruitment, retention, and also the facility, so if you could come back, Principal of Prepatec. I actually had the privilege of serving the southeast community as a field deputy during my days at LAUSD, so I know that the communities, I know them well, and I also know that they tend to be not very friendly towards charter schools. And that's something that seeps through the community and also even their own individual governing bodies from the different cities. So I could understand why you're having a hard time recruiting, but I'm wondering, how do you plan to recruit, and even if the numbers are lowered? And also, because I know the area so well, I know that HP and Bell tend to be rivals, the high schools at least, so I'm wondering how you're going to create a school culture when you have your students split in two cities, although the cities are so close by and everything is like two streets away, but the culture there is, it's, you know, Huntington Park versus Bell, and now you have one 9th grade in one side and 10th grade in the other. So what's your plan to bring them together to really have a unified school culture and also grow in one location? And I also. And I also know how difficult it is to find facilities in the southeast because it's such, these are small, dense cities. But again, I am concerned that we're trying to build a culture and you have your students split up, which is a very common practice. But given the landscape of the communities in the southeast, that could be a little problematic for school culture.
And I'll address the question about culture first. And I guess it is a challenging thing to be in a Prop 39 site where, you know, we do have, you know, Prepatech schools, right? They've been around for 10 years. And there is an elementary school there that started organically almost 10 years ago and then, you know, moved on to middle school, now high school. So you do have a lot of families that are very much pro-charter. And being on an LUSD site for them was a very difficult thing at the beginning for us to, a message to get across. But in time, I think everyone has begun to embrace that concept. And Huntington Park High School has a brand-new principal and a couple of new vice principals that, I mean, we've been working together. It's been great. It's been great. District personnel has received us very well. Their parent center, which is right across from our building, has been very welcoming. So so far, all the signs are there that we're going to collaborate and work well together. Luckily, this, the way this Prop 39 is set up, we are almost completely separate from the rest of the high school. So we're not going to have much interaction, but we do share sports. And we have been, last year, we did have the opportunity to send kids to play varsity and junior varsity sports at HP. Very few kids participated. They did not feel comfortable going there. Now that we're on that site, though, it's almost like we have a satellite office there. And our participation with sports has grown by 10 times. So so far, as unusual as it may seem and as difficult as this may have, this whole concept, you know, was maybe 15 years ago, between charter schools and LUSD schools, so far, it's actually gone quite well. And of course, when the school year begins tomorrow, then we'll really find out what else we need to do. But, you know, we are in uniform. They're not in uniform. We have a separate entrance. We have our own set of rules. I think through very careful planning with our orientations and talking to parents about what needs to be done, you know, we do feel that we're going to carve our little culture on that same property. Now, our other campus is in Bell. And luckily, with CIF rules, we, at first, we thought half of our kids would have to play sports at Bell and then the other half at HP. Luckily, CIF already thought of this, and all our kids have to play sports at HP. So we don't have to work with Bell at this time. So so far, it seems like we're taking those steps and we're just carving out our own culture within the same property.
Well, I meant your own school. So your 10th graders and your 9th graders, when will you physically bring them together? What is the plan to have them all in one location? Because then you're going to grow into, you're going to have juniors and seniors. So where, where's your school? Is it going to be in two different locations, in three different locations? Is there a plan of how to bring your school together and keep them in one location and start building your school culture in one location versus co-locating?
Our CMO office with our executive director are actively right now in conversations with the local community college. They're planning to abandon a large campus that we, they're talking to about, you know, moving in there. I don't think I can reveal too much about that. I'm not part of those conversations. But that is one of the plans. It is a large enough property where we can have all our four grades there. And it's only maybe five or six blocks away.
Okay.
Should I answer the first question? So the first question is about enrollment and just looking at year one or year two enrollment. You know, we started last year with 105. This year, we're going to start with 125, 130, and we're still enrolling. We're starting to develop a bit of a niche. You know, we're the only IB school. So that is of interest to families. We do have busing, so we have added a few more stops in, throughout the South LA area. And that seems to be bringing in families that were, you know, interested in us, but maybe the parents don't drive or can't afford to bring the kids to us. We are out there and we're still enrolling. So there is, there is a need in South LA for high school IB. And parents are slowly finding out about us through flyers and all the different things that we do. But our busing has been a big, a big help, and we just added that this year.
Okay, Board Member Rucker.
Okay, so first of all, I want to congratulate you for being on International Baccalaureate Program. Starting up that program, regardless of what type of school that you are, what district you're located in, is very difficult. And it is also difficult to recruit students to go into the program. So I think you're doing, you're taking on a very important and significant type of high school experience for your students. So I want to congratulate you on that. It doesn't surprise me about the facilities and the need to split up your campus, particularly in the communities where you work. I'm going to use on purpose the word landlocked because there really is not a lot of options for trying to grow or expand your program. And that could also be, in some ways, material to some of the recruitment challenges you're finding in finding and identifying students. Parents may be making a decision to be attracted to your program because of IB, but have a concern about the location of facility where their students may be going. Cindy indicated that part of the reason why, or part of what she asked you to speak to today is about your recruitment strategy. So I do have some questions for you on that. Knowing that you are still working to grow your program, you're adding a grade this year and you'll be adding another grade next year. Can you tell me a little bit more about what your actual recruitment strategy is? And in asking you this, it's not related to the material revision that you're requesting to change your enrollment. But I want to understand what your challenge is and in understanding why this particular revision is important to be approved, I want to make sure that you all have a clear understanding, not only of what your recruitment challenge is, but in crafting your program for the recruitment, your plan is a reflection of your understanding of those challenges. So I'm going to vote, I want to let you know before you even answer this, I'm going to vote to support the material revision. But I want to make sure next year, you're not going to be coming back again and asking for another reduction because your plan for recruiting did not work. I want to make sure that you have a clear idea about what your recruitment challenges are and how you think your plan addresses it.
I think one of our, we're understanding our challenges more and more. And I, I'll talk about two things, our challenges and then the message that we're getting out now that's, that we feel is working. And the challenge is IB is rigorous. And some families feel their kids are not ready for it or, you know, our kids are taking seven, eight classes instead of six. We don't have an emphasis on sports and our emphasis is academics. It's not a traditional high school experience. We're zeroed in on getting kids to college. So that is, it's a great thing, but it's still a challenge. But at the same time, the message that's really working for us right now is that, you know, that we're a rigorous school. We are now officially an IB candidate school. So we can actually put the logos on our website and on our paper. We couldn't do that before. So it was all, it was all based on trust that we're going to apply and be accepted as an applicant school and also trust that we're going to find them a facility that works. So I've been really blown away by how loyal the families that do like our message and believe in our message, how loyal they are. And I tell you right now, they'll follow us to Linwood or somewhere else in South LA just to be a part of this program, you know, with what we'd have established so far. But the message that's really working for us is the IB. And the, you know, the world studies, the, you know, the kids learning a second language, kids working in teams, presenting, all that sort of instruction. You know, I'm very fluent in Spanish, so I can explain this very well to parents. All that, that entire message is really working with some parents, and it's, the word is slowly getting out. So when I go out and recruit and I speak to families at churches and at different recruitment events, just talking about the academic program and the rigor of it and the kind of classes they're taking and the critical thinking and working in groups and presenting all that message, that's what's slowly bringing us more and more students. So we're going to continue with that. And once students enroll with us, they don't leave. As long as they get in the door and they get a taste of the experience of what we're providing students, they don't leave anymore. And that's why we were able to retain kids last year, even though our facility was not the best. I don't know if that answers your entire question.
Board Member Holliday?
No. Okay, I'll be honest with you. No, it didn't answer the question. And I think you were aware that no, it didn't answer the question. But I understand what you're saying about if you get them in the door, the experience retains them. So I understand that, and I believe you on that point. But my question was, what are you going to be doing during the course of this year to get them in the door? So I heard you talk about some of the recruitment events and your visits to specific places. So let me just suggest, and again, as I told you before, when I asked the question, this, you're getting, you're getting a question from a receptive and supportive board member. I'm going to vote to approve this material revision. Let me suggest that you, you really do need to think about scheduling the events. You need to have some goals about what will constitute your new incoming class, how many students at a minimum you need and why that number is important. You need to talk to, you need to think about what your deliverables are in doing this recruitment and where you're going in each of those events and planning that type of recruitment. We have people on the board who do this better than I do. We have people in the audience who are stakeholders with different charter management and charter advisory groups who can help you on that. So I urgently recommend that you talk with Eric and with the Charter Schools Association to get some help on your recruitment because my concern is we're going to see you back here again next year asking for another change if you do not develop a more concrete recruitment strategy. And Eric, I'm apologizing now for volunteering you into that. But I know you will do that, and I know you will help, will help him with that.
The one thing we're definitely doing is starting earlier. In the first couple of years of Prepatech, the outreach didn't start until January, February. And in that community, not just L United, but also other charters, we'll start as early as October. So that is on our schedule for the year already, having open houses earlier in the year so that your parents can come in and understand what we do. So that is on the schedule already. And we do have some strategic partnerships with some middle schools, charter and LUSD. Everyone's been very friendly so far and different organizations to go in and speak. So we do have a handful, more than a handful of places to go to, but I, I agree with you. We need to do more.
And again, let me, I'm going to, I said this yesterday and I'm going to, and this bears repeating. You can't make progress without struggling. That's not my original idea. Frederick Douglass said it first, and he said it better. Embrace the fact that you are struggling and be honest in that conversation so that, because it will help you understand not only what you're struggling with, but it'll help you come up with more concrete ways to resolve what those issues are. And again, my advice really and truly is, there are some experts who have testified today, and you've, I had a chance, you weren't here when they testified, but please make sure before you leave today that you talk to those folks and get some help on that. Because if you don't come up with a better idea for doing your recruitment, your school is not going to survive.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Holliday?
I'm sorry that you weren't here at the beginning and hear the CDE presentation because I think that might have helped you present in a slightly different way and address some of these questions that have been raised. But I do, I do think that sort of naturally you're finding ways to help your recruitment process, such as the busing. I struggled with recruitment in a charter school for a number of years. And, you know, what's important to families, what's important to parents, I didn't quite understand until I got into the weeds. And then suddenly, things came up that were really, really helpful. So I agree with Member Rucker that there are people that can really support you in this process. That being said, this recommendation by the CDE has very specific conditions and technical amendments associated with this recommendation that we are going to vote for. And I want to address some of those very specifically with you. For one thing, it does, there is a condition that says that you absolutely have to detail out a very specific strategic recruitment and retention plan. And so based upon your comments this morning, I have a feeling that when this passes, as I think it will, you really will need to sit down and detail that out and provide that to the CDE. I do want to talk about a couple of the other conditions, though. One of the conditions or technical amendments, I guess it's defined here in this recommendation, is about the school site council. And in that technical amendment, the CDE is asking that your school site council number 20. As I understand it, ED Code does not require a specific number. However, it does require a ratio between community members, teachers, and that the composition of this school site council is determined by ED Code. I'm a bit concerned about our setting a precedent of establishing a specific number for a charter school, school site council. And what I intend to do is to make a recommendation that changes this technical amendment to provide more flexibility in terms of the number of members of the school site council, but adheres to ED Code specifically. Is that something that you've thought about? Are you perfectly content with this number 20? Would it, you know, is it more appropriate to change this amendment to align and verify to the CDE that you are meeting ED Code as opposed to a specific number?
You know what? The wishes of our board is to comply with the state board recommendation. That is their wish. As principal, I'm the one that's actually going to be out there implementing this. I, if we could have that as, you know, what ED Code has, it makes it more doable for us. Last year, that's what we did. We ran it what the ED Code requires. But if we go above that, it just makes it a little more challenging. But I know our board officially would like to just comply with what you recommend.
Oh, Member Rucker.
Okay, so, you know, I read that and I actually wasn't bothered by that particular number just because of the multiple sites that all of the students would be at. I think the ED Code requires, the school site council contains basically two groups. There's a staff side of the school site council and there's a parent side. And I thought, when I read that part, I was looking particularly at the issue of the parent side. If the goal for this recommendation was to ensure or to assure the opportunity that parents from each of these sites where the school will be housed have an opportunity to be on the school site council, you're going to have a lot of parents on that school site council. You're going to then have to have parity from the staff side. So that site council's going to grow in sheer numbers anyway. So the number didn't bother me, but I understand the revision that you want to make to simply say that it has to have the parity between, in the composition as required by the education code. So if you're going to do that, could I offer a friendly amendment saying that there needs to be assurance that parents from each of the sites where the school will be located will have parity or in representation on that council? So that would mean at least one parent from each site, at least one parent from each site.
Cindy, would you like to speak to this question about why this number 20 came up? I just, I just think it's a situation where we're adding something to ED Code that we don't need to add. That's, that's all.
Come up, please. Yeah, you speak into the microphone?
You need to come up.
We base the numbers on what's in the petition in terms of the multiple schools. But really, the intent is that they meet the education code. So we'll just have to look at that and make sure that the numbers align with that. So we are fine with that.
Okay, thanks. And one more. So. So you already have, in essence, a school culture established with a great number of the, the children that you work with because they have actually matriculated from an elementary school into a middle school and now many of them are continuing on into this high school. Is that correct?
About 65% of our kids come from our middle school. So that is mostly true, but there, we do have a good number of kids coming from a variety of different charter and district schools throughout South LA.
About 65% come out of the middle school?
And about 35 are from other schools.
Are they in an IB program in the middle school?
Yes, they are. IB in the elementary and in the, in middle school.
So it's important for them, if they want to continue in the IB program, and obviously 65% of them do want to, it's important that they have an IB high school to go to. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
So what are their options if they don't go to you?
They don't attend Prepatech. There are a couple of charter schools in the area, but that would, you know, that would...
IB options.
But they're not IB.
I'm talking IB options.
IB, there are not any at all.
So, thank you, sir.
Okay.
So one of my concerns here is that the admissions preferences do not give any preference to the middle school Prepatech that has an IB program. And I do think that, once again, the recommendation from the CDE goes as far as the usual statement about school, I mean, admissions preferences. But at the same time, in this case, as in other cases that we've seen with some of the charters that we've, some other additional admissions preferences could be appropriate. And in this, and that is within our right to do. And in this case, I do believe that having an admissions preference available in the list for Prepatech Middle School would be appropriate. Otherwise, these IB kids could be left out in the, in the, in the process of the whole program. And as I understand it, the IB program doesn't end at, at middle school. And so being able to make sure that these kids can continue, I think is an important piece. So with that, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah, do you have any response to that?
No, I, I agree. I mean, the kids are, you know, the IB program, middle year program is a five-year program. And, you know, even though middle school ends and they're going to high school, they still need years four and five to complete what they're doing. So I completely agree that we should give our, our own middle school kids preference. You know, our, our middle school is smaller than what our high school numbers are going to be anyway. So there's always going to be room for other kids, for, you know, diversity and just bringing new kids into the system.
Okay, we're ready for the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm passing around a motion just so everyone can read it and make sure that you're clear on it. I am going to take the friendly suggestion from member Rucker. And so we will add just a couple, a few words, six, seven words in this to make that piece. So this is not, what I gave you is not quite right. So approve the CDE recommendation with changes to two technical amendments, school site council and admission preferences. For the school site council, the technical amendment shall require Prepatech to verify with CDE that site council membership is compliant with ed code section 52852. And I would add at the end of that sentence, these words, "and include parents from each site." Okay? And then for the admissions preferences, technical amendment, approve the preferences recommended by CDE along with the additional preference for students attending Prepatech Los Angeles operated by Prepatech. That's my motion.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, raise your hands. Good. All right, we'll take a break for the board, so we'll come back at 10 o'clock. We convene and we're now ready for item 20, the Solarity Charter School Material Revision. This is another public hearing, so Cindy Chan will present to begin that and then we'll move to the public hearing.
Okay, so this one is a little bit longer, but then item 21 is, is a duplicate of this one because they're identical petitions, so that one will be shorter. But this one's a little longer because it's just a, it's more complicated. So item 20 is a request for a material, again, Cindy Chan, Director of the Charter Schools Division at the California Department of Education. Item 20 is a request for a material revision from a current state board of education authorized charter school. Solarity Homalia Charter was originally denied by the Los Angeles Unified School District and the Los Angeles County Board of Education. Solarity Homalia appealed to the state and was approved by the state board in November 2016 for a five-year term to serve 455 pupils in transitional kindergarten through grade six in year one, which is 2017-18, increasing to 565 pupils in TK through grade eight by 2020-21. Solarity Homalia is in year two of its five-year term, but in its first year of operation this year, recently opening on August 15th. The charter school offers a site-based matriculation setting with a commitment to increasing the achievement of at-risk pupils from communities in need within LAUSD. On June 1st, the CDE received Solarity Homalia's request for material revision to its charter, which includes the following changes, and then I will, I will briefly summarize each one. Change to the governance structure, termination of Solarity Global Development Services contracts, increases in pupil enrollment, change to grade levels offered, and a change to the facilities. So give me a little bit of background about the governance structure. If you recall, back in November, when the original Solarity Homalia petition was presented, we had expressed some concerns over the governance structure, which was multi-layered and very complex. We did a lot of boxes and everything on, on how to describe it. Solarity Homalia is operated by Solarity Educational Group, a nonprofit public benefit corporation that oversees a network of charter schools, including seven in Los Angeles County. The governance structure authorizes Solarity Global Development, another separate nonprofit public benefit corporation, to serve as the sole statutory member of CEG. I'm going to refer to Solarity Educational Group as CEG. In that capacity, Solarity Global or Global, Global's rights include approving the elected CEG trustees and may also remove a CEG trustee at any time without cause. In addition to Global's role as sole statutory member of CEG, CEG also contracts with Global for various services for all of the charter schools it oversees. We had concern that the control that this affords one of CEG's primary vendors over its governing board presents the potential for conflict of interest that puts at risk the charter school's operational welfare. So in the material revision, Solarity Homalia is proposing to change the governance structure. In May 2017, Global's Board of Directors adopted a resolution resigning as a sole statutory member of CEG, thereby relinquishing all of its rights as a member of CEG, including those reflected in the CEG bylaws. The CEG Board of Directors adopted a resolution accepting Global's resignation as sole statutory member, also amending CEG's bylaws to remove any and all rights of Global in CEG and reflecting that CEG shall have no members, just, they'll just, just have their board of trustees. These actions are documented in a number of the attachments that we've included for, in the item. A second change is the termination of the Solarity Global Development Services contracts as the vendor for CEG. So in the current Solarity Homalia petition, CEG contracts with Global for various services, management, fiscal, personnel, procurement, facilities operations, facilities financing, different program services, and other miscellaneous services. With the material revision, CEG submitted a transition plan to sever contracts with Global. In June 2017, CEG sent terminations to Global of the two contracts between CEG and Global for limited services and an agreement for miscellaneous, miscellaneous services. These terminations triggered the 120-day notice that the contracts will expire on September 30th, 2017. Also, CEG's board did not renew its annual contracts with Attenture, a global affiliate that assisted with information technology. As part of the transition plan, services will be provided either in-house with the hiring of new positions or selecting new vendors to provide those services. CEG has been recruiting and continues to hire key executive team positions. By October 1st, 2017, CEG expects to have severed all ties with Global and Global affiliates. So the third change in the material revision is the change to grade levels and enrollment. In 2016, the LAUSD board denied the renewal of two Solarity charter schools, Solarity Diad Charter and Solarity Trica Charter. Both charter schools appealed to the state board for renewal and both were denied by the state board at the May 2017 meeting. Solarity Diad and Solarity Trica closed effective June 30th. As a result of these closures, Solarity Homalia is proposing to add grade levels in the current year and in next year and to increase enrollment across all years. Specifically, they will offer TK through grade eight in all years. The, the material revision change is that they're going to add grade seven and grade eight in the current year and then add grade eight in 2018-19. And then the rest was in the original plan. So their proposals to increase enrollment each year are estimated at approximately a 63% increase in the current year, 43% increase next year, and then a 39% increase in the last two years. And that's, those increases are in comparison to the original build-out plan. As a result of the additional grade levels and increases to enrollment, Solarity Homalia is proposing to operate at four leased facilities within the LAUSD boundaries that will serve different grade level clusters. So that is a change to the original plan. And then finally, on the financial plan, we reviewed the revised financial plan submitted with the material revision and we just highlight, revenues and expenditures for the proposed increases to pupil enrollment and expenses for the additional facilities are included and appear sufficient. It includes expenditures that represent some of the changes to services outlined in CEG's transition plan to sever contracts with Global. And it also includes expenditures to Global to cover services being provided by Global until the service contracts are terminated on October 1st. As new contracts are secured by CEG, the CDE will perform a review of each contract and the cost impact to the financial plan, since it's still sort of in a transition state. Overall, we find the charter school's revised financial plan to be fiscally viable with projected positive ending fund balances and reserves. The Advisory Commission on Charter Schools considered the Solarity Homalia petition, material revision at its August 15th meeting and voted unanimously to recommend that the state board approve the request for a material revision of the Solarity Homalia charter as proposed by the CDE. As part of our review, we reviewed the petition documents thoroughly to determine whether the petition sufficiently meets the required legal criteria. And we find that it does adequately describe the educational program and with the, and the multiple required elements, noting we found one element that required a technical amendment. With that, the CD recommends that the state board hold a public hearing and thereafter approve with one condition, which I'll note, and a technical amendment, the request for material revision of the Solarity Homalia charter under the oversight of the state board for the remainder of the charter term effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2021. As part of the approval, we recommend that, if, if you recall, there was a condition that we recommended in the original petition and we feel that it's still necessary and prudent to maintain that condition, but we have revised it slightly. It was slightly modified, we've removed Global. And so it reads now, "CEG may only continue to contract with affiliates for goods and our services if CEG and the affiliates agree to timely respond to all CD inquiries and to the operations of CEG, any, any affiliates, including but, but not limited to management, fiscal, personnel, procurement, facilities, operation, and financing, and programmatic services in accordance with Education Code 47604.3 and fully cooperate with any investigation to their operations conducted pursuant to Education Code 47604.4." This condition will remain in effect for the term of the charter. So we just want to maintain that original condition that the state board approved. So representatives from the charter school are here to address the state board and I can answer any questions you, that you have as well.
Thank you. Board technical questions on anything Cindy has covered at this point? Being none, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open and we, both sides have 10 minutes in the public hearing. And the, I'll start with the petitioners for the approval of the material amendment.
Good morning. My name is Grace Canada and I have the honor and pleasure of serving as the CEO for Solarity Educational Group. Next to me is Nadia Scheich, our Chief Academic Officer. I'm going to speak to you today about operational and governance improvements and Nadia will address our request for expansion of enrollment and grade levels. Before turning to the governance issues, I want to remind you that Solarity succeeds where so many others fail, from South Los Angeles to the Valley. Our schools outperformed LAUSD, the county and state averages in both math and ELA on the 2016 CASP. And we are proud to be recently featured in CDE's own Youth, Voice, and Leadership and Safe and Supporting Environment videos, expanded learning videos. But the accolades and numbers, like the recent Stanford report highlighted in this slide, only tell half the story. We invite each of you to visit our schools so you can see for yourselves what makes Solarity so special. Onto why we're here today. Solarity Educational Group, which I will often refer to as, by its acronym, CEG, is requesting a material revision to its charter to reflect a separation from Solarity Global Development. I will get into the details in a minute of how we've separated, but I just want to convey the big picture. It is a new day at Solarity. We have terminated our relationship with Solarity Global. Solarity's board is also making changes in senior leadership. As mentioned, as mentioned to the commissioners at the ACCS and with staff, I plan to step aside as CEO as we near the completion of this transition and let new leadership alongside our current leadership such as Nadia, write the next chapter of Solarity's story. I am, of course, committed to helping our new leaders to manage and work through this transition period and for our schools to continue to run smoothly. The board and our leadership are also committed to continuing to work closely with our authorizers. To that end, we are particularly proud that the ACCS, CDE's staff, and LAUSD just on Tuesday have all reacted positively to the changes that we've made. Now to the details of what we've already done. As you may recall, CEG previously had two connections with Solarity Global Development. First, Global was CEG's parent organization, so to speak, or to be more precise, the sole member of CEG. That has been terminated completely. There is no longer any corporate relationship whatsoever between us, CEG, and Global. The second component was that Global provided a suite of services to CEG through contracts. No more. By October 1st, 2017, we will not be receiving any services from Global or for that matter, any affiliate, Global affiliate. To fill in the services previously provided by Global and Global affiliates, we are utilizing both outside vendors and ramping up our own staff and capabilities. On the vendor front, we have made swift but careful progress, leading to our board's approval earlier this month of vendors for back office, payroll, PR, and E-rate. approval earlier this month of vendors for back office, payroll, PR, and E-rate. The process we followed was thorough. We had a public RFP. The proposals were then reviewed by staff, presented to the Audit and Compliance Committee, and then presented to the board, recommended to the board for approval. The board examined them and approved the vendors. We've also been bringing some components in-house. We've filled eight key positions and are busy interviewing additional candidates for a new general counsel position and to continue our renowned performing arts program. Simply put, we are ready and excited about this next chapter in the Celerity story. We are also proud of our efforts to enhance oversight. In May, the CEG's board created an Audit and Compliance Committee that will oversee our internal controls, policies, and risk management, our auditors and the auditing process, among other things. Indeed, the committee has been particularly busy over the last few months, as they have been meeting regularly, twice, sometimes twice a week, to oversee the process of this transition away from Global. We believe that these efforts at reform will not only make Celerity a better and stronger organization, but will also allow us to go back to WASK and get all of our schools accredited, including the schools before you today, Rolas and Himalaya. As you know well, our academic successes are undeniable, and with the changes we've made over the last few months, we believe our schools will be in a great position to obtain WASK's mark of excellence. With that, I turn this over to Nadia to discuss our recent request for increases in the number of students and grade levels so that we can offer, that we can offer to our many students and parents who want a Celerity education.
Thank you, Grace. As Grace mentioned, there's a strong demand for Celerity schools because of our reputation for academic excellence. That demand is best exemplified by Himalaya, our new school in South Los Angeles. We're already at capacity at Himalaya with 479 students in school and learning as we speak, but we have 223 more elementary students on the waitlist, and we have 229 middle school students ready to enroll if we're allowed to add grades six through eight. The staggering demand only surfaced as the start of the school year approached. At the beginning of the process, we only received 236 applications, and most of those dropped out due to uncertainty about Prop 39 space. But after Diads sadly closed and parents started researching their local options, demand grew substantially, leading to where we are today, filled with a long waiting list. We'd love to accommodate these students and give them the first-rate education they deserve. We have the teachers, the facilities, and the resources ready to do that. I wanted to end our presentation with a story about a seventh-grade student and her mother, who I met about a month ago. When Diad closed, the mother looked around at the local options and decided her daughter could not attend. Putting aside the poor academics, she feared for her daughter's safety at schools where gangs and drugs were prevalent. So she decided to enroll her daughter at Celerity Nason, our sister school, which is half an hour away. In order to do that, she had to drop her first child off at Himalaya and then drive over to Nason. The family was waking up earlier, getting home later. The mother, she works an hourly shift and actually asked for less hours so she could make the drive, which was a financial strain on the family. But when I asked her about it, she said, "It's worth it for a Celerity education." We have a group of parents who were considering pitching and renting a bus in order to get over to Nason. When I asked that mother what she wanted me to convey for her, she asked just to request to the board to open a middle school at Himalaya so that the parents and students have a Celerity school in their backyard where they should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now we're ready for 10 minutes for the opponents to the material revision. Seeing no opponents, I declare the public hearing closed, and I think we'll take public comment and then proceed to our discussion.
Will the following people please line up to speak for item 20? Sheba Gillis, Carla Lavadores, and Patrick Stickley.
My name is Atrella Gillis, and I am the Director of Expanded Learning at Celerity Educational Group. I've been with Celerity for 10 years, and in that time, I've been a teacher, a curriculum specialist, a principal, and currently the Director of Expanded Learning. I'd like to talk to you today and appeal to you to approve the addition of middle school to Celerity Himalaya and later, Celerity Rolas. I can attest firsthand to the passion and to the dedication that is poured into every single Celerity student to ensure that their exposure is broadened, their goals are heightened, and that their dreams become a reality. The sense of community within a Celerity campus, within a Celerity school, goes beyond the classroom. My colleagues and I have mentored former students through high school, undergrad, and now even graduate school. I ask today that you approve the addition of grades six through eight at Celerity Himalaya so the students in middle school have the opportunity that our former students have had, the opportunity to learn and to grow in an environment that is centered on their academic success, but also cultivates them, thank you, to become conscious members of our society. Thank you.
Good morning, dear board members. My name is Carla Lavadores, and I have two children. One of them is in third grade at Celerity Himalaya Charter School. Today, I would like to share my point of view as a parent. We live in South Central Lay, South Central. What I can assure you is that there is a big difference between our school, Celerity Himalaya, and any other schools. Within our community, students and parents attending Celerity Himalaya can confirm the greatness of his small community school. Today, I would like to ask from you esteemed, I'm sorry, esteemed board members, if you value the education of our children, please allow grades six through eight be open, since my son needs a school that will challenge him and bring out his potential. Myself and our community will be grateful forever. Thank you.
Good morning, board members. My name is Patrick Stickley, and I'm the Principal of Celerity Himalaya Charter School. We opened our doors on August 15, 479 students, kinder through fifth grades, and we also have a waitlist, as Ms. Scheich said, of more than 100 students, more than 200 students for our middle school. Middle school students such as Alfredo, Sara E., and John. In addition to their parents, they're hoping that Celerity Himalaya's material revision is approved today so that they have a choice where to complete their middle school academic career. They have stopped by the office. They've called in and said, "Hey, how are things going? What's the progress of the request?" I believe those families have decided on Celerity Himalaya because of our successful academic program and the safety of our campuses. With your approval of Celerity Himalaya's material revision today, it will enable California students in South Los Angeles to choose where they experience their middle school education. Thank you.
Eric Premack, CSDC, also just wanted to echo everybody's comments with respect to Ms. Chan. She's done fantastic work here, and I know that when I get into an argument with her, I'm going to have a real problem because she's always fact-based and a straight shooter. And she's had, I think, the two hardest jobs in the department here, running the apportionments unit that doles out the big money to school districts and the charter directorship, although Carrick's job may be harder. Strongly support the amendments here. Commend Celerity on their work to streamline what was a pretty complicated governance structure. I wanted to shift back to the prior item and just go on the record saying that it's been our long understanding for over 20 years that there's no requirement at all for a charter school to have a school site council. That was the whole idea of the charter school block grant funding system, and we've been kind of playing a little game of bureaucratic whack-a-mole on a whole bunch of issues, and this is just one of maybe 20 or 30 of them hanging out there. I see a few nods up there and hope that we can clean that up. Thank you.
Michelle Lynch, on behalf of the California Charter Schools Association, also here in support of this material revision today. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the public testimony. So, Board Member Holiday, do you want to make remarks now or defer?
So I think Celerity Education Group heard this board very clearly with our concerns in the past and have stepped up through this material revision to make the changes that would provide the transparency and the clarity of the governance structure. I commend them for taking these steps. I think that it shows a tremendous focus and dedication to their students and to their families and to their educational program. This is, in some ways, above and beyond potentially what might have been required, but they have certainly taken the bull by the horns and made these changes. That being said, I do also want to add that Member Williams and I have been learning a lot about nonprofit governance structures over the past few months, and I thought I knew quite a bit about them, but I'm learning more and more. And I hope that Member Williams and I will be able to provide this board with further information if should nonprofit governance structures become an issue moving down the road. In this case, once again, I commend Celerity Education Group for taking the stand for making these changes and bringing them as a material revision to the board, and I would move the CDE recommendation.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Yes, yeah, we're ready for board member comments. I have one too. Go ahead.
Well, I actually have two. One is, as I recall, part of our issue with the other, the two that we turned down had to do with law enforcement activity surrounding Celerity. And so I don't know if there's a question for you, Cindy, in your review or not, but I'm not clear whether that law enforcement activity was directed at the schools, because this is where we got into this entanglement of these various entities, or was directed at the corporation, the sole statutory, and whether or not in the review of this material revision, you were able to get any clarity about what that raid was about, what the status of it is, whether it has any impact on these schools going forward. That's my first question. I'll ask both of them while you're here. And then the second one is, the one that's troubling to me is the WASK status. And it's, there's just a little paragraph in our item, and then it's left unsaid. I appreciate the school directly responding to it, but that's a pretty big deal to have your accreditation withdrawn. So anyway, if you could address those two.
So we had reached out to both federal agencies, and again, this was all based on media, you know, but Celerity stepped up and did notify us that they were approached and had to provide records. So we reached out to the agency. We also reached out to LAUSD's Office of Inspector General, which is different. That's their own inspection agency, and we weren't given any updates. I mean, it's pretty much sort of a sealed, secret kind of review. I mean, they don't share anything publicly until they're done. So as far as we know, we don't know the status of it. I think the school had updated at one point, saying they hadn't heard anything. We did ask for, because they didn't know what the scope of the investigation was, so we asked for, well, what did they take? What did they, what kind of records did they take to give us an idea? And off the top of my head, it appeared to be nothing to do with the school. There were no school records. It was all administration. It looked to be more of the, of the, you know, the work with Global, more of the CMO work. It was more those kinds of records, so nothing to do with pupils or the actual charter school itself. And that's as much as we could get. In terms of the WASK letter, I mean, in reading through the last, I think, letter that was sent to the charter school, it appeared to be a lot of it to do with the raid. You know, the fact that that happened and they couldn't answer anything. And then I think, and Celerity will have to speak to this, I think WASK asked for some sort of audit, which I don't know if it was done or if they had even gone out and tried to get one, and I think maybe it was to help WASK get a sense of, you know, their operations. So, but we did put that in there because we thought it was important. Again, you know, these are middle, it's middle school, so I mean, it's, has a little less impact than the high school, than a high school would. But we did ask Celerity to kind of address that, and so they did in their PowerPoint, like, "What are you going to do moving forward?" And I think there is an appeal process for the charter school, and I think they were looking at whether they would, they would move forward and do that or not. So at the time, that was something that their board was considering, and they were going to update, you know, you all here on what their plan is moving forward.
I have a follow-up question to that, which is, the Los Angeles Unified School Board heard Celerity, and it seemed to go reasonably well. Do you have any comment on that Tuesday night? They, no? Maybe, well, okay. All right, there's articles about they're considering, it seemed to be positive to me. Could Celerity comment on it? I realize that it's there, it's your viewpoint, but I think it's worth a board hearing that there was a local school board that considered this quite deeply on Tuesday night.
Yes, we were at the LAUSD Board Rebuilding on Tuesday evening. We presented the material revisions for our four schools that are authorized by LAUSD. I believe it went well. We received a 7-0 vote in support of the material revision. Was there anything else regarding that?
You know, all I've read is the media, which confirms what you're saying, and even some of your critics voted for it, 7-0, right?
Yes, it was 7-0, absolutely.
I think that's important for the record, for people to know that that happened at the local level, which is, okay, I think Board Member Rucker was next.
Well, as always, I'm happy when I follow Board Member Burr. She asked two of the questions that I had some concern about. I do have a couple of other questions, and I did want to talk to the outgoing CEO. I have a couple of questions for you on this. First of all, congratulate, I was also going to comment about the success of your conversation with the, with the LAUSD School Board. And in your presentation, you talked about the fact that you will be resigning your current position. Will you be continuing in any way in work, continuing to work with the charter school?
I'm committed to transitioning Nadia Scheich in. The specifics, the specific details, we are still needing to work out the details of that.
So then when that transition is done, will you?
I will no, I will no longer be at Celerity Educational Group, no.
Okay. My other question is concerning the WASK accreditation. Are you, what is your plan or what is, and this may be something beyond the scope of the balance of your tenure, but is there a plan to address how the accreditation will be restored or the work that you'll do with WASK? Under, I appreciate that Cindy explained what kind of documents were actually the source of what was requested in this investigation, and the investigation is proceeding through no fault of your own, and it's not your fault either that it's non-public, that they're doing their investigation behind closed doors. But we can draw some conclusions from the types of documents or the types of information that they asked for, that what is not in question or what is not under review probably is not the school program or the services you're providing to students. And I suspect that in some ways, the decision that WASK made to review and remove the accreditation was an, I'm going to say this word on purpose, knee-jerk reaction to what happened with the investigation and the criminal proceedings. And so I believe that at some point in time, they may come to that conclusion as well, but how are you, is there a plan to help them to understand or come to that conclusion so that they can make the determination to restore the accreditation?
Yeah, absolutely. So the CEG Board has met to discuss WASK and is planning on focusing on the reapplication process and is planning to. We're confident that the changes that we're talking about today, the governance and the termination of the contracts, are all, will be, will help in that reapplication process.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And let me just say to my colleagues on the board, this is, this charter item and the other two items we looked at, this is some of the messiness that comes with dealing with innovation and taking on the responsibility of monitoring and oversight. And while it is a lot of work and it does take up a lot of time, it's important to do that work, and it's important- that work, and it's important to take that time to do those things. It's an exercise of our due diligence. If we want to choose to lead and innovate, we have to choose to take the time to deal with the messiness. So, I have to just say, because I was one of those folks when this whole conversation started, who asked a lot of questions and who made it clear that I didn't understand, I didn't, I smelled a rat. I appreciate for my colleagues, your patience in allowing me to ask those questions and allowing me to disagree. And I think what we did in going through this messiness and in dealing with this problem, we modeled how adults have disagreements, how adults have conversation about some of those really tough things, and how a mature policy conversation where we have to struggle actually should play out in a public forum. So, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank my colleagues on the board for the work and the diligence we exercised in investigating and looking into this.
Yes, Ortiz will come on.
Thank you. I think that Celerity is taking the right steps to address some of the concerns that we all voiced in our previous meeting. But I wanted to ask specifically, I know that you severance your relationship with Celerity Educational Group, but specifically McFarland, is there any way, any role that she will play moving forward? And is it possible for us to specifically call out the name? Because I've seen where there's bodies at, you know, severance relationships, and then they start, they come back in a different group and a different consulting capacity under a different name. And so, I want to make sure that, because that is the root of a lot of these issues, that we do specify this person in any contract consulting with this particular person or any organization that she represents could also be part of our disclaimers and our technical amendment. And I'm wondering if the school could answer, is there any role that you foresee for this person moving forward? Well, can I, I want to hear them say no.
So, Ms. McFarland does not have any current role with CEG, and the board is clear. The answer is no, moving forward, no, no role moving forward with Ms. McFarland or Global or Global Affiliates.
That was also an issue addressed by the Los Angeles Unified School District in quite a bit of depth, so. Okay, Board Member Valdez.
So, I just conferred with Judy. I mean, we had, that was one reason why we left the condition in there, because the whole plan, the transition plan is still sort of rolling out. The school hasn't yet opened, so this will be our first kind of opportunity to work on oversight with the school. And so, just as for prudence, we maintained the condition. We did remove Global, but we left affiliates in there. We should still cover it, but we could include an individual in the condition. I think we'd have to, we can just add to the affiliates.
Well, I think the condition is pretty overarching and broad. I don't think it's necessary to call out anything more specific, but if that is something that the board requires, I would have no objection, but, pardon me?
I just wanted to follow before you, you make your motion and to vote. I did find the documents. I just wanted to kind of read them off, the things that the, in the raid that they took. Business records, including, for example, contracts, lease agreements, personnel listings, employee registers, grant applications, board meeting minutes, memoranda, administrative records, insurance quotes, travel records, draft budget proposals, organization chart, articles of incorporation, and then financial and accounting records, including, for example, payroll records, receipts, invoices, billing statements, bank account records, credit card records, check ledgers and photocopies, wire transfer documents, tax records and financial audit documents. So, that's what the charter school provided to us, saying these were the types of records that we had to provide to the federal and LAUSD OIG agencies. So, that was the specific response.
Board Member Valdez.
So, I appreciate the reorganization and the real true listening to some of the recommendations and conversations that were happening. So, one other point of clarification is, what does the structure of the governing board look like, and is there a community member on it? And are these the same board members that they had when we either didn't go forward with the last two schools at the May meeting?
I'll have to look at that. I don't know, Grace, can you answer that one? I'm looking this up.
The current CEG board members, the five board members are still the same board members, but I do know that the CEG Board, and we've expressed to CDE staff here as well as LAUSD, is willing to work with authorizers to add new members or work with authorizers to change that if necessary. But currently, it is the same five members.
Can I build on that? Did you change? I thought in May, you talked about some board members being new.
In, no, so there was an Audit and Compliance Committee created with three members on that committee, Kurt Hessler, Ron Ben Yehuda, and Francisco Mares. And so, that is the sort of subcommittee or committee that is overseeing this entire transition. And then, they report back up to the CEG Board.
Member Valdez, did you have another question? Okay. So, Member Holiday?
Again, I did make a motion earlier, but preemptive strike didn't work. So, I would like to move the CDE recommendation.
Second?
I'll, oh, there's a second?
No, no, I'm asking if there's a second.
I, I'll second.
Okay. Okay, any comments on the motion? So, we'll take a board member vote. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 21. So, item 21 is a request for a material revision from another current state board of education authorized charter school. Celerity Rolas Charter was originally denied by LAUSD and the Los Angeles County Board of Education. The charter school appealed to the state and was approved by the state board in November 2016 at the same meeting that Celerity Himalaya was approved, for a five-year term to serve 455 pupils in transitional kindergarten through grade six in its first year of operation, which is in, the current year is their first year, increasing to 565 pupils in TK through grade eight by 2020-21. Again, the charter school is in year two of a five-year term, but it is in its first year of operation this year, recently opening on August 15th. So, I'm going to focus just on the material revision. This one is pretty much identical to Celerity Himalaya, so just to save you some time. I will just summarize the couple of differences. The material revision request is the same, change to governance structure, termination of Celerity Global Development Services contracts, slight increase in pupil enrollment. There is a change to the grade levels offered, and then, there's a minor change to facilities. So, the enrollment differences are really minor. There's only about an addition of 25 pupils that they're adding a year, but they are adding a couple of grade levels earlier, so they're going to add grade seven and grade eight in the current year, and then adding grade eight next year, which is, that's the change from the original petition. In terms of the facilities, they're changing, making a change to facilities operations. They will occupy two private facilities and one Proposition 39 facility within the LAUSD boundaries. That, again, will serve different clusters of grade levels for the charter school. We reviewed the financial plan, which was revised with the material revision, and we find it to be fiscally viable with projected positive ending fund balances and reserves. The Advisory Commission on Charter Schools considered the Celerity Rolas petition material revision at its August 15th meeting and voted unanimously to recommend that the state board approve the request for material revision of the Celerity Rolas Charter as proposed by the CDE. Again, we are recommending the same condition that we recommended with Celerity Himalaya, so if there was any modification to that, you'd want to make the same action on this one. And there is the same technical amendment. There's a minor technical amendment to dispute resolution in their charter. But with that, we would recommend that the state board hold a public hearing, approve with one condition and the technical amendment, the request for material revision of the Celerity Rolas Charter under the oversight of the state board for the remainder of the charter term effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2021.
Okay, any board member comments before? Let's have public comment.
Public hearing, we got to do the public hearing.
Well, public hearing, yeah, okay. I open the public hearing. Each side will have 10 minutes.
My name is Grace Canada. I'm the CEO of Celerity Educational Group. My portion of this next presentation mirrors that of the previous regarding operational and governance improvements. So, if it's okay, I'd like to kick this over, Nadia, to talk specifically about Rolas Charter School.
Hello. Our new Rolas school is also seeing substantial interest from its community. This is particularly true for our middle school, where we have 72 students from the Eagle Rock and Highland Park area who want to attend if we can open these grade levels. As with Himalaya, we're ready to serve these students. We have what we need, the teachers, the supplies, the resources, and we've carefully planned our school calendar. All we need now is the wonderful students in the seats. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the opposition will now have 10 minutes. Seeing one, we're ready for public comment.
The following people line up.
Oppose to public hearing.
The following people, please line up to speak to item 21. Cona Solis, Eric Premack, Michelle Lynch.
My name is Karina Solis Robles, and I am the principal of Celerity Rolas Charter School. I've been with Celerity since 2005, and I'm still here 12 years later, because I truly believe this is an organization that supports their teachers, students, and families. Celerity Rolas has already in its existence created a school like no other in northeast Los Angeles. It is one which teachers and staff collaborate to create environments centered on students and their individual needs, and which parents are equal and active partners in this journey. I want to share a quick story about incoming eighth grade student that is on our wait list. The student has been with Celerity School since kinder and is currently on the wait list for Celerity Rolas and will enroll if our material revision is approved. I spoke to this student last week as he was with his mother to pick up a younger sibling, and I asked him, how was it going at his new school? The student said that he didn't feel welcomed and felt like his teachers at his new schools didn't know him. He asked, will I be able to come back to Celerity School, to a Celerity School? I would love to give this family a call today and tell them yes. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, that's no other comments. All right. All right, Board Member Holiday, you want to make some comments?
No, I would move the CDE recommendation, though.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Board member discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, carries unanimously. All right, now, we're up to item 22 for general public comment that are issues that are not on our agenda.
Would those signed for public comment please step to the mic, line up.
Yes, come forward, please.
My name is Guruj Raj Narasimha. I'm a resident of Folsom, California for the past 12 years now, and two of my children go to school in Sacramento area, and one of them is in the middle school. I'm here to talk about the Instructional Quality Commission and the textbook review, the social sciences drafts from HMH, Megra Hills, and Discovery. I feel that the IQC is working in the best interest of the publishers rather than the public interest, which I'm very much concerned about. So, there has been a lot of stories of bullying that the public, many of them being children, they have shared in the past. So, they have sat through public testimony, focused, they focus on a timer instead of the speaker. So, a lot of feedback was provided by the review panels, and those were not considered at all. And some incorrect instructions were also provided so that the publisher's draft textbooks could get approved. I'm here by requesting, thank you.
Hi, my name is Chiranth, and I am from Folsom, resident of Folsom, and my kid is, will be going to school from next year. And I'm here to express the anguish about the process violations the IQC has committed in 2016 and 17. The IQC facilitators pressurized the individual panel members multiple times. Many content reviewers has raised concerns over the IQC's protecting the public interest during the panel reviews especially. There was explicit push to end early on 25th and of August, and consequently, the deliberations were ended a day fully, fully before, actually. One day was totally canceled. So, multiple time, the members of the community were stopped by IQC staff from entering the building. So, on one of my case, and I went with my friends for, like, on 11 o'clock, 11 a.m. from my office to attend this, they did not allow us inside because it was closed early. Thanks for listening. Thank you very much.
I know you're all ready to get out, so I'm going to try to do this in a minute. I think there's not enough time in a minute to tell you what on earth we're talking about. So, it's really about the history, social science, textbook curriculum, and we have a whole group of people protesting at many events, but that's not the best way to do things. We had to be item number 17 for this discussion. So, we're going to try to do that after this board meeting, try to see how we can get on an agenda item rather than being part of item 22, where we get a minute. So, my colleagues here are trying to speak and trying to make an impression in a minute, just telling you that we will come back and reach out to your people, try to get on the board to give you more information on what the problem really is about the curriculum about India and the textbooks. We don't want it to be better than what it is, but we don't want it to be wrong. And all our attempt seems to be just wasting our time and making all of us look bad, because you guys have such complicated topics here. So, we'll do that outside this meeting today. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. I guess that concludes the public comment. No more commenters. All right, so the meeting is, yeah, yes.
So, Carrick Ashley, Deputy Superintendent. When I said my kind words about Cindy Chan before, did not have the certificate from the superintendent. So, I will read just the highlights, because there's much information here about Cindy's career, including 31 years of state service. But for her commitment to excellence and unparalleled work ethic, her tenacity and attention to detail have served her well throughout her career, allowing her to adroitly manage the most complex and sensitive program areas. This applies in particular to her work with charter schools and her ability to do multiple board items in very high heels. I added that last part myself. Superintendent, I'm sure, meant to say that. Anyway, again, congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, with that, the board is adjourned.